This time we'll call the meeting to order. Is there an invocation?
Right. Lord, we thank you for these leaders that give of their, their time, their talents and their gifts to lead and give instruction. I ask, Lord, that you would use them in a great way tonight. Bless this meeting. Ask that you would bless and prosper this city. And just ask that you would please meet with us this evening. Give us wisdom in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any changes to the agenda this evening?
No. I move to approve the agenda. Second.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. Anyone? Moving on to proclamations, recognitions, presentations. We have the commission reorganization. First would be the election results and the oath of office.
Uh, the election results, so Chuck Lambert's 1,730 votes. And then there were several, like, and fifteen that were two or less votes that I will not read all of the several laid out names. There was Donald Duck and Elmo Matildev. And then other regulars.
You beat them all.
Now we'll do the oath of office, I guess.
Good morning.
I Chuck Lambert.
Do solemnly swear it or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of City Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chuck, we do have a presentation of a class view at this time. Were you in that before or after the mayor?
I think after they reorganized.
After reorganization.
I want to go with you.
Yeah, you might be mayor again.
Um, at this time, we'll move on to annual commission reorganization, the election of the mayor and mayor pro temp. I would move to appoint Amy Jackson as mayor, Ashley Hutchinson as mayor pro temp.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lambert and second by Commissioner Wentz to appoint Amy Jackson as mayor and Ashley Hutchinson as mayor pro temp. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mayor.
Page.
Um, next thing on the agenda designation of City Commissioner to the Cloud Court Board of Directors. That was formerly my position. I did.
I would nominate Ashley.
I second the nominations.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, or sorry Wentz, seconded by Commissioner Hatch to appoint Ashley Hutchinson to the Cloud Court Board of Directors. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, designation to the City Commissioner to the Frank Carlson Library Board. Uh, the state statute requires that this be the mayor. So no motion as required, so I will take over that role. Remind me what night that is.
Uh, it's the first Tuesday, generally the first Tuesday of every month at five P M. We have a, a sitting library board member in the audience this evening, recently joined. He would be happy to answer any questions, provide whatever further detailed information about. Helpful. Mr. King.
Super.
The only thing I have to say is you leave and I'm the only guy on the board. Thanks, Chuck.
Welcome.
Moving on to the action agenda. Minutes for the December fourth, twenty twenty four meeting.
I need to print the minutes of December fourth.
Second.
Minutes of the December fourth meeting approved by Commissioner Wentz, seconded by Commissioner Hatch. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number twenty three.
I move to approve appropriation when it's number twenty three.
Second.
Appropriations ordinance number twenty three, approved by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by Commissioner Wentz. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the Brown Grand Theater Boiler piping and ductwork bids.
Mayor Commissioners, we have some challenges with the steam pipes at the Brown Grand. We've done some significant repairs for the last couple of years and decided that it was time to look at replacement of those steam pipes. We added this to the F Y twenty five C I P list for next year. So we went ahead and bid it out in hopes that we can get it done in early January so that we weren't without too much heat for very long there. Um, we scoped out the work with knowledgeable providers at that time and then bid it out to several plumbing H V contractors, as you can see in your packet. We only received one bid back and that was from Hoodie to In Air at one hundred seventy seven thousand nine hundred dollars. This is about three times as high as what our estimate was and what we had planned in the C I P. And so we are going to recommend that we reject the bids and allow staff to negotiate directly with Hoods to find a viable solution that's, that's cost effective. The reason we're recommending to work with Hoods because they were the only responsive bidder to us. They were one that we had that has knowledge of the building and does a lot of our maintenance already. So is very familiar with the building. We think that's important because it helps preserve the integrity of the building and since it's not causing any further damage. Melissa's here in the audience. If you have any questions for her about functionality or what, what we try to scope the project out.
Uh, the question that I, was there, was there significantly more work that was discovered after um, the initial conversation?
There, there was a significant component that was missed. So when we were scoping out the project, the initial, the initial four inch boiler pipe, we thought that we could reduce that down to a two or two and a half inch boiler pipe and run it through the four inches like a conduit. But as, um, as we looked more into it, you realized that we needed to also insulate that pipe. And in order to insulate the pipe, they need better access to it, which added about five hundred labor hours to the bid. Um, and that is what added the most to the bid itself.
They needed to insulate the pipe that was going to be inside of another pipe that's not currently insulated?
I think, yeah, but I, I know that's just, just what we were talking. So we haven't had a fairly short turnaround, get the agenda item out. So we need to go back and take a look and really work through the details on scoping. But for the purposes of this bid and what was scoped out.
Sure.
It does not fit our budget to any, and so we need to go back and see if they're on board.
I would move to reject all bids and authorize city staff to negotiate directly with those for a repair solution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to reject all bids and negotiate directly with the city mayor. Any further discussion?
Do we currently have heat in that building? Okay, so it's not like you're without heat.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion is not passed. Well, it is, but it's.
Yes.
It's passed to reject.
Okay.
Uh, Cloud Port twenty twenty five professional service agreement.
Mayor Commissioners, this will be the Cloud Port Professional Service Agreement. And Tim Bynes, Executive Director is here to present that agreement.
Good evening, new mayor and, and Commissioners. I address the commission this evening to, uh, to request the formal approval of that professional service agreement for economic development services for calendar year twenty twenty five. So the agreement you see before you was submitted to the commission back in June as part of the city's budget planning process. Um, that agreement is unchanged from what you reviewed back in June. Um, so the, the funding requested for a total appropriation of fifty eight thousand, fifty five thousand, which is for Cloud Corp general operations and economic development initiatives. That other three thousand is for business services that are administered through Cloud Corps, um, namely, uh, the business training classes, um, that we provide uh, free of charge to residents in Cloud County. And it's also, those classes are also prereq for some of the ground funding, including getting cloud grant funding, so. So, um, um, I just, I respectfully request your formal approval of that, uh, professional service agreement for twenty twenty five. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, um, to the best of my ability. Um, do also appreciate, I just want to say that I appreciate the, uh, the support and cooperation over the years that Cloud Corp has received from, from this body, um, as well as some of the other bodies that provide, provide our, our funding for, for us to execute the mission, so appreciate that.
A quick question, on your budget, the budget that was included is the twenty twenty four budget, not the twenty twenty five budget? Is that, that was just to show what your past budget looks like?
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. And the budget amount for twenty twenty five is essentially unchanged for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I guess my concern was, I know that, you know, we're going to see a salary jump there and last year's budget ran forty thousand in the hole. And I know that there's stuff that you do in between here, there's projects that we, that you pull out of there. But, um, if that, if that budget hole gets bigger and you're primarily funded by government entities, you know, what's the plan to kind of, to fill that gap?
Yeah, going forward, part of that gap will be, will be, uh, offset by private contributions.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's a key part of the plan. Um, but as we look forward, the, the budget that we have is essentially in the allocation, the appropriation um, to our, our main, to the city and county have been unchanged since, I think, two thousand sixteen.
Right.
So those are all things that we, we need to look at going forward. Absolutely.
Uh, with that, I would move to approve the Cloud Corp twenty twenty five professional services agreement.
Second. I move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the Cloud Corp twenty twenty five professional service agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the police department vehicle.
Good evening. I've got two quotes back, one from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles, we call it SERV, and then the other one is Farm Country Board here. Um, is to replace our two thousand fourteen Dodge Charger that's currently used as an admin vehicle and can be used on patrol. The biggest thing is the difference between an admin vehicle and patrol vehicles. The admin vehicle does not have a cage in it, it still has the back seats and it don't have, we call it the push bumper or the big go guard on the front. What, what this admin vehicle does is it transports any juveniles or any younger children that can't go in, that we need a car seat to put into a regular seat instead of a hard plastic seat. Um, the Dodge, Dodge Charger is, is getting worn out. Um, it's been down to see Shelby multiple times, the front end, it's really making a loud noise. And I currently have it in Hutch right now at the academy, um, with one of the cadets that will be coming back and she's, she's scared to drive it. So, um, I started calling around and putting some bits together. Um, the big difference you'll notice is, is yeah, there's only about four thousand dollars difference. The biggest difference is with SERV is it's totally outfitted when I pick it up and it's available within thirty days of this purchase versus if I get it from Farm Country, it's a six months. Um, six months before I can pick it up and then I have to take it to send one to put the light package in it. And then that could be another seven or eight months, but, um, pretty close, really. Um, I just asked that we go with the vehicle one that's recommended with the drum SERV for, uh, the forty eight thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars. Oh, and something else I want to add is we're trying to keep all our vehicles the silver color. That's getting to be an issue, it seems like every couple of years they start to change the colors on us. So this one might be just a little bit darker, but it should match the fleet. Just some, so.
And I really appreciate that we have a lot of enforcement vehicle without, um, the cage or that, that, I mean, I know that that's very important for a number of our vehicles, but, but I know that a lot of juveniles and young people aren't, they're really of their volition. And so being able to try to make that a more comfortable, I, I think is really important. But I appreciate having that option available in our fleet.
Yeah, and we also try to take it to training and stuff like that. If more than one person are going, you get three people going, someone has to sit in the back in the cage. And if, if we have to go very far, it's kind of a long trip in that plastic cage, but.
Draw straws for her.
Yeah, usually I drive, so. But anyway, it's my recommendation that, that we go with SERV. That way it'll be fully outfitted and a three year warranty on any of their insulation. Any other questions?
And warranty on the vehicle itself.
It's a factory warranty, okay, the five years. Yep.
I'd, I'd move to approve the purchase of the Dodge Durango Pursuit from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles in the amount of forty eight thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars and one cent to be paid from the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the purchase of the Dodge Durango Pursuit vehicle from Superior Emergency Response Vehicles. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports, manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, after the last commission meeting, I did travel to Latha for the K C M conference. It was a good weekend of, um, courses and networking. And then I set up SERV on a panel from mid-career professionals at, at that time, with the C managers from Valley Center and Lewisburg. So that was really good, good experience there. Interestingly, our outing was to a tour via Latha Community Rec Center, which was timely for our discussion today. So that was a really good trip. Uh, last Friday, went to Mulvaney for the Lakeview County Municipalities governing body meeting and just getting gary, garyed up for the next legislative session was kind of the focus of, of that meeting. Our K dot transportation alternative sidewalk project that will kind of help to connect the middle school with the residential, residential areas on the north side of Highway nine and then over to the elementary school. We sent out the R F Q for design professionals to, uh, this week, so that, those should be coming back here in January. We held the employee Christmas luncheon on December twelfth and it was well attended and well appreciated, a good, good relaxing time with everybody. And the prep and painting began this week ahead of our for covering replacements that's scheduled for January. So Jeremy and Shane are doing very hard at work, um, pulling off the old cove base and getting paint prepped in certain areas. We wanted to do that before the new carpet came in, even the most possible paint stains. So that was, that was really good. City Hall will be closed December twenty fourth and twenty fifth and January first in observance of Christmas and New Year's Day. So we would ask that people, if they need our services, go ahead and call and we go voicemail. We'll come back and we get back to the office. You can use the alley drop box, so I'm going to pay the system in between those times. Any questions?
Hello?
What are you doing?
Listening to the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go.
Bye.
Staff reports.
So these, uh, vehicles that we currently have down at the city yard, I've been working patiently with the, um, county attorney on trying to get all these done. I went to his office today, he called me up there and advised that he has everything done. And then he got to thinking about it and said that he can't represent the city of Concordia on the transfer of the titles and the paperwork that needs to be done for these vehicles. And he suggested I get ahold of our city attorney, which I've talked to Justin and he's going to work with Rob on trying to figure out where we need to pick up the process so we can get this completed.
I hope that it is an expeditious process.
I hope so too. I will, actually will be up there, uh, we have a retirement ceremony for Judge Steyer on Friday, so I will be at the courthouse and see if I just can't get everything from him and take it. I have a feeling the process is probably. We'll get that moving.
That would be fantastic.
Yes. So I think really it's just going to be some signatures on my part.
Yeah, so the, the whole time I was told that, yes, it, it was about done, about completed and just ready to go to the judge's desk. And then I got the bad news the other day, so, um, I just definitely want to share that with you because I thought we were moving in the right direction, but I think it's just a little bump in the road. I think Justin and I can get it figured out and get it moving again. Good, thank you.
Yeah. I guess I'm up here. Um, the eminent domain, uh, process is pretty much finished now. There's just one more order that was, uh, that I drafted, sent over to the Guardian Ad Lighter who represented the unknown heirs, if there were any. Uh, she approved that yesterday, um, so I talked to Amber this morning, told her, I'd get her the amount that needs to be taken up to the, uh, court to be held in their unapplied receipts, um, because we have not been able to get ahold of the folks who own the property. So that'll be held in unapplied receipts up at the courthouse. And then there's one last order that was approved, uh, yesterday by the Guardian Ad Lighter and then I'll have filed and, and the property will be transferred.
Any other staff reports?
All of it, it's our two, it's five, one, three, seven. Pre-able training on it, so not much we have to do. I'm just, you know, tools we put on.
I asked you about the lights last time, that was the angle.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it looks really nice. I went and looked at it after the meeting. Commissioner, comments and reports?
I had somebody ask me about rabbits being.
Trying to give the best advice we can on how to.
Eradicate them.
I think the biggest thing is they keep populating faster than, and it's very challenging.
Yeah.
And we are trying to give education on, they do make some stuff through bong guards that you can sprinkle in your yard, stuff like that. Um, we've asked, we do have traps available and, and we're trying to push that out as much as possible that if they would like to trap them, we would let them use the trap and pre-charge to remove the, the rabbit.
I don't have anything.
I just would like to, uh, congratulate Mayor Jackson. It's been an honor to serve as, as mayor the last couple of years, uh, but I really feel very fortunate to be sitting with this commission and appreciate the opportunities that we have. It's a wonderful time to be in Concordia, the holiday season's always nice, so time to kind of reflect and spend some time with families. Appreciate everyone here.
Yeah, I go where you said, and also we just have a lot of blessings in our community and our staff that's a huge part of that, so thank you so much.
I don't have anything this evening, so we'll move on to our executive sessions.
Move to recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data of trades or trade secrets of a business, K S A seventy five forty three nineteen B four with Amy Lang, Justin Farrell, Tim Bynes, Troy Leduke, Jesse Pounds, and Marie Fox.
Sure.
Also true.
And Shirley Leduke. Uh, to reconvene in the city commission chamber at six fifteen.
Second. I move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Hatch to adjourn into executive, to recess and the executive session to discuss confidential business matter. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No action was taken.
Yes.
I entertain a motion to bring us back into the same, the same individuals or additional. Um, for Commissioner, Amy, Amy Lang to reconvene at six twenty seven.
Sure.
It's just the same.
Just the commission and Amy Lang, not this. Okay, so not. Okay, do I have a?
Second.
As I was saying, Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Lambert to adjourn back into the executive session with, uh, all the commissioners and Amy Lang in.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Six twenty seven.
Twenty seven. We're taking the authority in. Oh.
No, I was just thinking. Non-elected personnel matter, except for K S A seventy five forty three nineteen B one with three position tenants in the commission chamber at six forty.
Yeah, there we go. Second.
With the motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz. Reconvene into the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, she had way more confidence in me than I did.
No action was taken. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of this daily section.
Into the rec study session. Okay, moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn into the recreation, Concordia Recreation Center study session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.
I need to take a break. I think it's Christmas and back. So listen, tend to pray, I don't have any fun on the game.
So here we are, uh, we're visiting the E N X Activity Center, um, project that we've discussed a couple of different times in your same sessions. Um, an ongoing conversation over the past quite a few years. Support, uh, Concordia, the whole, um, as in the memo, you saw some of the background, um, kind of the steps leading up to today, the last time you met. Um, you guys showed supportive, continuing on to to the floor plans and then leading to a overall cost. Um, to give us an idea of where it's at and, uh, but here we are today looking at this. Without, we can go into specifically the floor plan itself and what all it has, but our main priority was trying to create the most flexible space that can incorporate the majority of Concordia citizens in the community area. Um, range in age from toddlers, young children, all the way up. Um, that's how I can go with children, groups, copy groups, walkers, um, stuff like that. So we felt that was the most flexible, um, space that we could come up with. To incorporate as many people in the community as we can. We have two sides that we talked about last time and then I guess the first, first topic is. First topic is, do you guys have any questions about the building itself? Um, and then moving on to the site options. The two sites we're looking at were City Park just south of the pool and then also Razor Field. On the uh, close to the edge of town, about four dealership. There's good and bad to both. There's some bad, but there's different variations between both sites.
Benefits and challenges.
Yeah, that's the word. Um, so we can go into that. I keep looking for. Direction from you guys, commissioners, how we want to proceed with the. With this project and this conversation.
With um, with regards to the site, I know it's not, so both of these are obviously city-owned properties currently. Like the area over by the hospital where Runzo was gonna go, I don't know what that zone, but would that be an. Unappealing or un, I mean, just like any type of an option?
I don't think the area has been suitable.
Space-wise because of the drainage stuff behind it or?
Yeah, where.
Highway to the set back side.
Hundred seventy-two feet deep by two hundred and thirty-three foot. I don't know. Deep space on the building that itself, but on parking. I don't think it's.
You wouldn't want young kids probably. By the highway.
The walkers, they lost home from school. I mean, I know, well, yeah. I hear what you're saying. And we don't own it either. I just just was asking.
But I don't think it's.
Outside of Dollar Tree and even that footprint's really probably too. That won't really support what we're trying to do.
I love the idea of the hotspot. I mean, there there's not currently any opportunity for little kids from the cold weather to go and play or do anything. There's no. Chick-fil-A or McDonald's play area or anything like that for the little kids in in cold weather and especially winter weather. It's hard to travel with your kids out of town to let them run and play. So I love, I mean, I love that that was incorporated into the plan. The price tag was a little bit more than what I anticipated, especially after like the school district had said they're like that gym they were proposing was. Eight million, I think, at the time. I know this is bigger and has more sports. It is significantly more than. I anticipated, I guess, even with most of the research that I did on the high end was three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for wreck buildings. But I don't know if that includes the parking and all that.
Yeah.
Those plans.
The 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 way that I, the way that I made sense of that is, I mean, anytime you add a wall, you add expense. And I think a lot of specific recreation buildings. You're really able to give by what were the the PDM, is that what we're like the the pre-manufactured building, right, where that's just. A more of a box with basic gym space. And I think if we do that, the price really goes down, but then we lose some of the. Some of what, right, right?
Inner generational and multi-generational.
That's where Charles, the architect, really go then, you know, the pre-engineered to work on a flat surface, such as Razor. When you get into City Park with the valley, there's fourteen foot of drop there. Not so much of an option. I don't say not an option, but a better option would be the um. The traditional beams, sport walls, load-bearing walls, construction. Which, as you can see in there, adds to the cost.
What was the field house? What is the field house?
Square footage?
No, like is it, because I've seen the steel beams, but is that, is that part of like the?
It's a pre-engineered, I'm pretty sure. I think it is, but the.
Because it doesn't look like a Morton building, right? But it. But it looks nice. And so I think that. I want something that's gonna be aesthetically pleasing, but. All that stuff. Yeah, I think from a site. Like just, just the geography or the the geology of a site, I mean, Razor Field is perfect. It it is close to some of our other school buildings. I mean, it's close to elementary and and no school.
The parking was one of the biggest concerns, especially I had with City Park location. Being tighter, being other facilities in the area that you're kind of working around. According to the drawings, there's about twenty to thirty stall difference. But you will lose some of the site facilities we have now, but um. That was also interesting how we incorporated the. The change of height or depth of the area with change of facility kind of upside down, if you will. But where the top layer is on Razor, would be on Razor, it's more on the floor level now, the City Park, um if you read through there. So kind of goes down into the, to the valley as you walk in the main level, which is interesting to. Those, those challenges to both places.
I, I think it's all gonna matter and make a difference at the end. Um, but the other, I I think that we're really probably not quite six and one half a dozen, but the other one was probably gonna be pretty close regardless of which. Um, and I know there have been some kind of concern about accessibility, but it seemed like that if if we ended up doing it at City Park. That that what was gonna be on the lower level or would maybe be difficult to access would be primarily activity-based anyway. And so for accessibility, a lot of the activities that would be. Conducive to people with limited access would be on that main level where that wouldn't be as much of a. A problem, like the meeting room are downstairs, it's the core space downstairs, but the meeting space was upstairs.
Yeah, more community area.
So I didn't see that as much of a liability or a challenge.
I agree that Razor Field seems like the better of the options and it's located in between. The old school and the middle school, which is appealing and there there is more parking available than what I had anticipated that there would be. I having the two levels. Um, I guess is ideal, but it certainly increases the expense and then this amount. Um, and if a, if the track is on the second level, then is there a requirement to have an elevator to get to the second level?
But we're gonna have that, one or the other, right? Or you think about?
Well, if you have one lo, one level, but then you have to eliminate a significant amount of stuff or the parking, right? Which is also not appealing.
Yeah, you have, you have to double the footprint, right?
But do you need everything? Do you just need that main level and then you could put the walking track around the whole main level and cut out the. Earlier and exercise rooms and. I mean, thi- this is a great plan. This, I mean, I, but we we sit every weekend in places, watching basketball and they're typically just a big building with. Two courts and bathrooms and a little meeting area, I mean.
I, you know, probably the the one thing I did notice that I thought, I mean, having an exercise space, I think like we have. A lot of active gym space. Um, probably the biggest concern that would be that maybe somebody without a gym membership. This would benefit them, but we have Charps, dumbbells, CrossFit College. Uh, there's a lot of different exercise stuff, but are you thinking?
The, he calls it an exercise space. It was another multipurpose area, wasn't. I mean, even when we talked about it, it wasn't winning an exercise space for in there. It's. It was another multi-use area that's.
Okay.
Labeled exercise.
Okay.
Um, so it's functionality, like I said, creating the most flexibility within those spaces.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a weight room.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe somebody wants to do a yoga class, they can do a yoga class.
There is classes in town like um Jazzercise and yoga and just different things that they actually have had a pretty tremendously. Difficult time finding a steady place to be. I think, I mean, there's groups that meet, there's certain things at the hospital that. And, you know, or upstairs in buildings, but they're older groups, that it's harder for them to get upstairs. Um, and some of the gyms that are available and so I I think it would be nice to have an open space, not necessarily the weights, but an open space. Or those, those types of extra classes.
That's where we're going with that flexible space for, you know, whether it's birthday parties or not necessarily a just room with tables. But an open space that can meet different ways.
I was talking with, I'm sorry, with Caitlin Moore, which is the K-State extension. And she does a lot of exercise classes and she was telling me she would be thrilled with something like this because, yes, they really. Have challenges of finding places. I know they've done the senior center and that doesn't always work out so great either, you know, get out of time for them to eat and the temperature and. And all of that, so she was um would be very excited about the option for using it for that. And like the Jazzercise classes and and just in general, those kinds of programming.
Yeah, so I think that what really increases the cost is that it's not just the. The basketball space. It's it's all the other stuff that we're wanting to make it more of a community activity center than just.
And I agree. I mean, the, the golf simulator might be fluff for, for us in our budget. Um, not that it's not like an awesome idea, just. Like that might be something that, you know, would have to get maybe axed if we had to make a choice or something that could be added. Like have the space for it in a multipurpose room and then add it at a different time to make it work. I would, I would love to see the track on the main level so that we could just have one level, but I still, I mean, with the space of like, because it was designed this way, I don't know what that looks like. You know, if he, if he could design it within that parameter, do we lose all the parking?
I've been, and I was probably one of the biggest proponents of not having on the main level. Uh, I've been on those tracks. I've been in the middle of those tracks. It's dangerous. There's always collisions, not necessarily people running, but you have an activity in the middle going on and you have walkers on the outside with no border. And it's pretty hard to put a wall around it still. We're on the main level and still have open access, so. It's, it's dangerous having it to go down when you have it on one space, one level.
I get that, Chris, but you're at, you're adding another level. You're adding an elevator. You're adding, I mean, you're adding a lot of expense. Twenty million is a huge price that, you know, we've talked about like ten millions more, a bit more biteable. Like, it would be, I think, worth the time to think through a singular level. I mean, even just adding, you know, bumping out fifteen feet and having kind of those half wall, that eliminates the collisions. You know, with different entry points. I don't know, I, just two levels seems. Like a lot.
Yeah, I think I look at it like that's half the cost of the hospital, you know, a little bit less than half the cost of the hospital. The hospital, but what we're in place on. Yeah, but you're building hospital-grade level. This is a Morton building. What if the track was underground and there was just a ramp to get down to it? But like, not all of it was underground, so there's still windows, you know? So it wasn't like, you know, scary, but like a ramp to get, even if it was like two ramps.
How, how deep do we go at Razor before we start running into water table issues? I just, you're, you're pretty, you're pretty close to the river bottom there and I don't think that, I don't think that you can get too low before you really start. Having issues. Um, and I I think they're just, it's all, it's all sand down there at that point. And so you start. It's not gonna take much of a rain before we start having other sorts of compromises, I think, to lower levels.
Be boating on the lower level on this turf.
And maybe we want to offer that as an additional, like there's, there's a lot of, been able to put my kayak in it for four years. So maybe it's not much of an issue, but I just would worry if we dig that razor that we're gonna run, that we have the potential to run into issue there, which.
I don't think it's that shallow. I'm twenty-one, twenty-two out on the creek, out east town, they're fifty foot. Before water level.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's probably, I don't have any wells there, but.
Sure. Man, I think it's maybe just like a foot or two, but I didn't think you'd go, I'm like that.
So is that ridiculous? Like that, I mean, is there any other community centers that have something like that? I, I mean, I understand like you're, like the collision factor, which I could definitely see that. Um, and even just adding it to the main level and losing probably all the parking that already is like not an overwhelming amount of parking anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you would lose that much parking if you put it on the main level because you're really not creating that much more footprint. Um, with just, with that, I don't know how wide he has it, but. Roughly two, two lanes would be probably seventy foot maybe. I mean, you're not really creating that big footprint for just the track. But, I mean. I don't know the cost difference on that, and that's, that's what you, if you back and ask him.
Well, I can see that, is that even like a reasonable way to structures? It also gives you storm, you know, maybe a storm shelter.
And I think, I think if we're, if we're doing two stories, whatever we're doing, ground level and lower level or ground level, upper level, two stories is two stories. I don't, I don't know if there's gonna be any cost in that goodness to.
So only having the track underground?
Yeah.
Maybe not.
I can maybe see wrapping some of the other space with track and not the court space, if you had that on the first floor.
What's that?
If you, like, just looking at the footprint, kind of the internal, interior footprint, if you, if you wrapped. Some of the other spaces, not the, not the primary court space, and you reconfigured it to where the exercise room or these sorts of things were kind of. Inside that track space and wrapped that, wrap those facilities with the track and not the court, would that reduce the concern that you're talking about?
Yes, it would. With the activity space to the, to the walkers.
I need to pump it out. Even if it's a smaller track, yeah, too. Oh, it, I mean, it seems as though it would significantly decrease the cost and still have a lot of the amenities to just have a single level. But, I mean, other than maybe the golf simulator, there hasn't been any other. Feedback about anything to cut. Is there anything that you would see the need to or thought to, or is that, I mean, we need, you need locker rooms, you need. All the bathrooms, you need concessions area or and or, I mean, I love the coffee areas idea.
Kitchen, that would mean it'd be multi-use of sessions and around a little space and all that stuff. Now, I think the, even though that could have taken doing the green, pickleball courts and the walking track were the two biggest must haves.
And I wouldn't want to eliminate either of those that I, like, going to be on the main level, if we could make it work.
Can the pickleball courts be used as an indoor tennis?
They're smaller.
That's what I wondered.
They're closer to a volleyball. They're not exactly like a volleyball size. They're a little different still, but it's closer to that smaller footprint.
I think where that has the track where they use, where it's on the main level and it goes around gym, their thoughts.
I mean.
I can't picture where we've gone.
Abilings. Abilings has one main level. I've been probably like, I know Warfarin had theirs on the main level and that was not a setup of the community, but. Um, I know Highland has theirs on the main level.
It's, Pitt State does and their city manager said that's something that they would recommend not doing.
Colleges, you're probably not, like you said, they're not open to the public for all the use that they're gonna have. It's gonna cut off the use of the track.
And that was something I noticed when we, when we did the. When we took some tours of some athletic spaces around, we went and toured Highland was one of them. And that's kind of what I remember from that is that. It felt awkward with the track being where it was.
Well, and I think Washburn, they redid their ref facility and one of the big things when they redid the ref facility, I think I was in Roswell, it's sort of been like oh, four, when they finished that, they elevated their.
Correct, so it went up there, but the Lee Arena. Yeah, still was on the main floor. They did have community members walking there daily.
Yeah. You would have to have signs up basically to make, put people on notice that this is a recreational type of thing, because there's a liability issue. Some of all getting winged out there and hitting somebody, so it's when they, a lot of the times it's for a safety reason why they have elevated those, so they turn out right in the middle of potentially a sports event.
So who's more dangerous? The, the volleyball basketball players or the pickleballers?
Well, the crowds are gonna be at the basketball courts, so I, I think if you, that was a good idea, did you have an idea to put it around that side? That's much more.
If I'm just, the, the site two lower floor plan that I'm kind of looking at, that I just kind of feel like if you but, and I'm not, but if you put the pickleball and then the indoor turf and indoor playground, kind of side by side and a track around that, then that would be able to pivot the gymnasium and lower floor space. And still have room for the, the exercise, the multipurpose meeting space and some of the locker room. That would maybe, maybe we could reduce just a touch of the square footage that we have available with some of those things and be able to still maintain a single floor plan. But the question I have, like, you know, how much would that really reduce our costs? Does that reduce it by five hundred thousand dollars? So we?
It's worth knowing, is it six million dollar at a peak?
And how comfortable are we with the estimates, with the cost estimates, Amy? It's a fair question, and
I think that's a big question, yeah. I mean, you get other estimates, so yeah, I mean.
How comfortable am I with the cost or with the accuracy of the cost estimate? I'm more comfortable with the accuracy than I am the cost.
He mentioned in one of our meetings that because the square footage, price per square foot, um, he thought was a little off, and he actually talked to a different firm that was working on the same product or similar project. And as he started naming things off, he'd mentioned that some are technical, walking track football course, top lot, that stuff. And it was within eight dollar difference. Of the cost a square foot from a whole other firm.
The contractor that was building it, it's like the.
So he felt pretty comfortable with his his cost estimate that was pretty close. He is specifically conservative on his costs, so they are a little bit on the higher side. Instead of trying to nail it down.
No, I'd rather know what we're getting into.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
What if the track was just around the, like, the lower floor plan? Indoor, let's see, that would be site one, never mind. Yeah, site two, just around like the indoor turf and indoor playground, isn't that kind of geared for little kid play for the most part, or not? I thought that, is the turf for that also? So goes around those two, then, then moms could walk around the track while their toddlers play and they could see them. Maybe, you'd see them the whole time. And older people love little kids and they're like, oh, they're so cute and they could watch them do, and they go, maybe.
You're walking about a seventy-five foot circle.
Is that all it would be?
Yeah, the top lot, I mean, thirty-five by forty, you know, the turf area is forty by sixty. So you're not, you're walking a pretty big circle.
How big of a circle do? I don't know. I don't want to get dizzy. Because if you go all the way over where the pickleball courts are, then you can't see your kids anymore. Only for a few seconds.
I think the signage would be supervision, we were talking about, you know? Required supervision.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, you have to watch them, but you can watch them in circles, but not, probably not just a small circle.
How much flexibility do we have with? I mean, are, are we maxed out on how much we've spent? Like, we can't ask them to take a peek at what it would be?
We're, we're close, I hope. The last billing that we had, we were up to eight thousand of our allocation. We've, we've got, but I haven't got the final billing for the spin over for you.
Just gonna give them a budget first and then have them go in.
Our, our directive to them was a feasibility study, which was put everything in that the community's talked about for the last couple of years. Evaluate both sites so that we can make a decision on, is this something that we want to pursue? And if so, which site is best for us? And then get into the conversation of doing, need to cut or add or change things. And then discuss, okay, what, what kind of funding options do we have? What, what do you want us to explore? So um, I, I know it's easy to get down into wanting to value engineers, that's something that we, we understand we're really good at, but um, it, it would be helpful to us right now to know, is this something you guys still want to continue to explore? And so which site do you want? And then do you have a budget number in mind that you want to stick to, or do you want us to pursue some different funding options to see what's out there? And then come back to you with, hey, we found some answers to the questions that you raised today. Here's also some different funding options. Yes, we think we can get to the twenty million fairly easily, or no, that's way out of reach, we already have to cut X. What, what would you like us to do?
Well, I think that Razor Field is probably the best. I like the other because it's close to the high school. The Razor Fields close to that elementary and middle high school kids are dry, so. But, and I'd like to see what funding is available out there. I don't want to start cutting things because I wanted to arrive the first time.
Yeah.
I understand that. I just think that's a, that's a bite that.
Oh, yeah. Two or three times to make sure I was looking at the right zero. I, I'd say, yeah, we need to go ahead and look at.
Central grain opportunities, I haven't dug in the weeds too far, but um, there are some possibilities, but we definitely.
Yeah, I was just gonna see if we can re, we rebrand the track to the bicycle track and then take the money that Blue Cross is paying for bicycles and pay towards this. I have plenty in my pocket.
They do, they have different grant stuff. They do water fountains and stuff, you'd be on the bike for them. First, and I think that there would be people in the community that maybe would be willing, you know, like even the possibility of um, like in Salina, all of the gyms are named after somebody, there's somebody that sponsored or donated. So like maybe the top spot is, like, even just like the, the climbing stuff, maybe sponsored by someone or like a business. I, I could see some potential for those things in our community. I think it's really important to make it a place that is inclusive for, for all generations of people. And, you know, and, and I guess my, my maybe only reservation with it being at Razor is is it, I mean, is, it's such easy access for the elementary kids and the other kids, or people just gonna send their kids there after school and like you're like, here you go, Chris. See him, we'll pick him up when the place closes, you're charred. Well, I mean, that, that's a possibility and like there's, there's.
You know, so, so let's, let's say that's the case, and I think that there are things that we would need to do to help safeguard that, but if our kids have a safe place to go and recreate, then we're doing that, like, that's, we're building healthy community, and that's, that's part of what we said we're gonna do.
That's true. But I wouldn't want them to, I wouldn't want it to be dominated by that and then drive out, you know, maybe like some of the older population that would enjoy that because it's so loud or there's, you know, unsupervised, right? But it would have to be.
Sure, and I, I
Or separated or.
Most, most people would either know or find out pretty quick what time's school let out. So if I want to go for a walk and it's quiet, or if I want to go take a walk and watch how like the kids play, then I'm gonna go at two thirty or three thirty.
Right, right.
And there's always regulation with that. I mean, I've talked to several um directors and it always comes to that to some point, you know, kids being dropped off. Things popping in and stuff like that. So there's always a degree of that. Um, the regulation of it and the control of it is just um procedural. Safeguard and then um especially with the floor plan of how we kind of split up some of the areas to, you know, the top lots back in the corner or to the seating areas and the multi-use areas, so it's further away. We try to incorporate some of those thoughts as well.
And their engineering, do they get, and maybe, did they give you an estimate of cost for operations just with utilities? I don't think about the operation, okay. And then, not to beat a dead horse, but previous times we talked about it, there is a need to explore that operational piece beyond just the, those costs of what the plan is to, I mean, it's not too, I don't think it's too early to think through some of that, even though they're ongoing in a building or just at one time.
Sure, and so.
Yeah, a plan for, and is it redistribution of people? That makes a lot of sense, but what is, what are? How are you gonna do that after? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and in my, in my mind, when we were looking for this information, I think that like, just the idea, this gives us something to actually have in our hand and to look at and to make part. I, I think it's, I think it is worth pursuing. I think that, that, the, the interest that's been expressed hasn't waned. Um, I hear from a lot of folks, I mean, we don't, we don't have kids anymore that would play in the top lot, but we've always identified that as something that would be beneficial, so I think that, I mean, I, I think that it, it ultimately, I would, it all comes down to, to, to cost.
Yeah.
Right? And, and where we're gonna be able to put that together, how we're gonna put that together. I don't think it's from a lack of interest. Razor Field seems like the most reasonable. I, I, I agree with you, Marshall, like the idea of, you know, like having us the, the parks there, the pools there, there's a lot of the basketball courts, there's a lot of activity there, sort of the high school is there. We have the sports complex there, elementary, middle school is there, so I mean, it really, it still fits with some of that support and a flat piece of ground is always gonna be easier to build on. And if it reduces our building costs, then it seems like that's just the most vital site to continue exploring.
And before we got these numbers, when everything was a guess, we didn't know for sure, um, the twenty to thirty percent shocked me a little bit, many few sites, um, those price difference.
Well, so in my professional work, I mean, a lot of times it simply is identifying a point that allows you to start working away from it. Right? I mean, without that information, then you're just kind of out in the middle of nowhere. And so here's a point, now we can start working around that, working away from, working towards it, and it's helpful.
Part of, I mean, part of the plan of, of these gyms would have open gyms also, right? So they won't just be for teams, they'll be open gyms for people to go in and pick up games and that kind of thing like.
I mean, they'd be reservable, especially for city red type stuff. Possibly for tribal things, something like that, but yeah, part of that procedure will be trying to designate as much open access.
Like routine, open gym.
Yeah.
Well, also, it's like the caution, don't get those little bitty bleachers that they have at the extra gym in Salina. If you've ever had to sit in those, they're so awful. I don't think they.
Better to not have anything.
No, I think I'd rather. Really, they're like, it's, they're very. Most of everybody agrees probably, that's awful. I don't, I don't know if they did that on purpose or if those are meant to actually stand on, but.
Those are, they're seating, when, I think all the four rows or five rows, and when you get to, to the, I think it's fourth row, um, you can only get so high in the back if I have a railing.
They're against the wall. Put turp under it or rubber mat or something, I don't know. But they don't, they don't have railings on the ones in the other gym that are hired.
You're making sense, Amy, and that just doesn't.
No, there are not any. They're against the wall.
I said you are making sense. It makes sense of regulations.
It's not. It doesn't make any sense to me. Okay, so we, so we agree that we want to continue to proceed with exploring this. We want to look at all the funding opportunities available.
And I know we're getting close, but is, is there a way to configure this to where we could get it to a viable single, single floor? If so, does that, what does that do to the potential? I think those are my takeaways from shy of the golf simulator. I don't know really, and I'm, and I'm an advocate for that, but uh, but honestly, at the outset, then maybe that's just an open space, another multipurpose space that then you could outfit, right?
I mean, it's, the purpose around the golf seminar wasn't just for golf, it was the multipurpose simulator, we were pretty everything on. Especially around here, golf and archery were two ones that I heard more often than not. They make them now where they pop up, they're inflatable. I mean, they can do a lot of different options with them. You could put them down on the gym, on a turf mat or stuff like that. So, yeah, those some. Add it on later, like you said, or whatever like that, so.
Well, and like what, I mean, if you itemize the cost of just that, is it, does it make a difference to keep it or cut it?
About five or six thousand O P's.
Means is it, would it generate?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a rentable space and kind of idea behind it, um, especially at that mid-teenager level for something for them to do is another another aspect, so, but yeah.
Yeah, I think they, I mean, they were probably too early to have any kind of like discussions about that, but, but then certain features maybe have an additional fee associated with them that anybody can come in here and do this, if you want to, if you want to reserve the room for this on an ongoing basis. But, but I don't want to become restrictive in that.
There are some community centers that, that you actually like, the community members pay for a membership for the community center. Um, and then if you don't live in the town and you want to use the facility, then you have to pay a little bit higher of an amount. I don't necessarily like the idea of that, but I, I don't know if like as far as like long-term expensive and stuff like that, if that's anything that we might have to consider. And I don't think that they're expensive for like a family. I think it's like a hundred dollars or something. Um, and I would hope it wouldn't turn people away or, you know, if, if that would be a necessary maintenance piece to it.
Well, and the difference between city taxpayers paying for, if you don't live in the city.
I'm not necessarily advocating for making it cost good money, but I mean, if, if that is the deal breaker with us having a place or not having a place, then I would.
Yeah, I mean, like, unless, unless we get this entirely paid for with grand dollars, which I don't know how that happens, we will be paying to use it, whether we're paying through the sales tax, the property tax, an additional fee here or there, we will be paying for it.
The one cent sales tax for ten years, is that, is that about one point four million per year?
One point twoish per year.
So you're looking at twelve million is your total availability on a ten-year.
If you use a hundred percent of it for this project, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's just also something we need to keep back on, which is why it's imperative that we get a price tag that's feasible.
Yeah, they have all the teachers who love it, but they have to pay for them, so.
So explore this as if we were gonna build a bit razor field. Um, look at funding options, look at a single floor option, and look at operational costs. And bring that back to you guys.
Is that vague enough for you to? Have you shared this with any of your peers?
A few that, I didn't know what whether I was supposed to. I mean, like the plans, I said we have plans and we're getting rendering and we're, we have a price, but I have not let them know that, what it is.
Sure, I, I apologize for the load of course, I think.
No.
I mean, do people still? Sure, I, I apologize for the load of course, I think, I mean, do people still, are you still hearing a lot of, that, are you hearing that interest?
All the time, but, you know, I mean, they're not gonna tell me they don't do it, but what's depressing to me is how many people have no clue. That we're even considering it. I, I, of course, when it's in my face all the time and I'm so passionate about it, I'm gonna know that, but I'm just. I'm just amazed that, and people like, what, what are you talking about, yeah. And, of course, I'm weird and I'm old and I listen to the radio every day.
But I think as we put more information together, and I think, imagine that as this gets shared, that, you know, I think that maybe. There's been some hesitation in sharing too much information, because I'd rather underpromise and overdeliver. But as this becomes maybe a more, a more serious pursuit, then maybe we'll get more input. Being able to explore other funding options, maybe we do gain more engagement with, well, you know. Start exploring some of those naming options, maybe we start generating with that. Feedback, but I just didn't know, like, wow, they were really fired up about it, and I haven't really heard from them lately, or if you're still, that they're still pretty fired up about it, excited.
Yeah, yeah, they're really good. And they're not gonna tell me they're not, so, so, but yes, very positive what I've been hearing. And if I could just find a million dollar donor. Well, for starters, now, here's my, here's my thing, somebody that would put a million dollars in a fund. Would generate fifty thousand dollars a year, so there you go, paying for, so, I just, and. Yeah, yeah, I just need to keep working, let's leave it at that, so. Somebody that would be passionate about this, that would want to, um, have a fund, a foundation, would, yeah. You never know.
You don't, you don't ever know.
Yeah, yeah.
Pursuing it, all right.
If you wanna hit the cap on the table, you can, because it is.